Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call the board. The joint meeting of the Anchorage District Board. And just for those who don't know, the charter requires that we meet every quarter, and it's a really wonderful thing. Madam clerk, roll call for the Assembly, please.
Ms. Ray Jackson.
Honored to be here.
Mr. Trainey.
Here.
Mr. Croft. Ms. Kimbowski.
Present.
Mr. Dunbar.
Here.
Mr. Appert.
Here.
Mr. Flynn asked to be excused. Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Mr. Starr. Mr. Steele.
Here.
Mr. Webster. You have four.
Thank you.
The board roll call. Uh, we may ask this a lot, but Secretary, I'll do that. Uh, President Lisa Stelling is excused. Debbie Davis.
Here.
Pat Higgins.
Here.
Star Marsette.
Yes.
Captain Buckett.
Here.
And Cameron Presby has to be excused. Senator Davis, would you lead us with a favor, please?
Honored to be here. To the flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic which stands on a nation of God. Indivisible, free, and justice for all.
Minutes of the meeting. Senator Stevens, 2016, have a motion for a summary. And second.
We'll approve the minutes of being asked to be in.
All second.
Asking out of this consent of the minute to be excused. To reject those minutes are true. Items of business. Welcome, Dr. Dana Coramo, ASDC from Tidbit. We want to take a moment to congratulate you on your contribution. And you're already welcome. If anybody has any accomplishments, please help everybody in the house.
We're just so excited that you're here.
I'm quite excited.
Mr. Trainey.
We appreciate having you here, and it's nice to have a superintendent who actually lives in Anchorage. Thank you very much. In the past, we had only issued without superintendents. But thank you for investing yourself and your time in this town. We appreciate it.
Have a beautiful holiday. See you outside.
Thank you, sweetie.
Item B, alternative start times for high schools. Do you have your life began at this question? I did believe it was somebody from the assembly who asked that to put on the agenda.
Thank you.
A simple member, Flynn, asked to have it on the agenda, and we did ask the school board if they could just review the issue or the highlights. Okay, sir. Pressing for the issue.
Uh, thank you, and I will just make a comment. Our board does have as a list of initiatives of an interest from community in regard to start times. It is backed by empirical evidence in regard to high school students being nocturnal and the like. You've probably seen it in the, in the news and such. We did review that action, and we're looking to see to build capacity. It would be a huge change, and so it would take garnering the support of the community and parents feeling confident in the switch. And, and the reason that you would switch is to have a larger start time for high school kids. That basically, when they start school early, they're, they're sleepy. They stay up late anyway. Uh, we are able to check out when they go through our bandwidth. Kids do do work online, tend to them that. We, we know that even by our own evidence, when they log into our system, when they are online doing their work for 20 minutes. So, uh, we can actually to see that activity light up then as well. But, uh, the, the concerns are three that were on the negative side, and then there's many on the positive, including the health. So it would just be, you know, if this is where we're gonna go, we can put our forces together and we really bring about positive change, you know, for learning environments. Um, the concerns were some more important than others, obviously. Students at work after school, that when they do get out early, they have time to work. Uh, also, the, and some concerns that were brought up were in regard to, uh, parents who have their older children watch their younger children when they're working. So the older kids get home first, younger kids come later. Uh, and the third, and possibly not as, um, important, because those things certainly can be changed with the momentum, is the awesome, that other school districts are not like this, who when we play sports, we do things, they like to get an early start. Um, I did want to update that, uh, you might have seen in the news in regard to Kenai School District. And they are looking at, um, the Superdome Life, which has spoken to each other. And, um, they have a new bus system that, uh, in Homer, so it's only the South Peninsula. They used to have one start time for all levels of schools in Homer. And the reason being is that they only have one bus service. It was one time, so it could serve all the schools. And the budget cuts, if you will, with transportation money being taken away, they need to go to two tiers so that they can share the buses. So the buses would take the little kids to school and then take the older kids. And currently, they continue to be on one time, but they need to change to two times. And they are looking at, um, flip-flopping pretty much what the rest of the state has in having the younger kids go first to school, say at the early time, perhaps at eight, the older kids starting at nine, or eight thirty to nine, seven thirty. And, uh, they're looking at that move. He believes that that's probably what the community is going to go with. And he said, and then the rest of Kenai, they were looking for FY nineteen the year after, that they would demonstrate the benefits to kids, being able to sleep in. High school kids attendance improving, high school kids achievement improving, and then they would make the switch. So, um, those are what the news is out there. We absolutely, there, I haven't found evidence in, um, the data in regard to, uh, it's better for kids to wake up early. Those data aren't there. It's just the conveniences and the routines we've established in our community over time, in our families, in our schools, that would, would affect the change. That's, that's not insurmountable, but it just takes time and connect with our community to bring about the ideas that they'd like. A small solution that I've, I've engaged with in a previous school district was, um, high schools started at seven fifteen and worked, and then middle school at eight, and they changed their tier. And so, uh, school start times were just to not have the biggest impact on community. They were moved fifteen minutes one year, fifteen minutes the next. So that high schools are seven forty-five instead of seven fifteen. So it was just a slight move, uh, but at the time, the community was not willing to totally flip-flop elementary and secondary because, uh, and those are the parent, similar needs of parents. So that's where we are. We, we do understand it. It has come up. Um, the board has requested administrative to look into it. Um, if this is something that we garnered, that this is something our community wants to go to, begin to do the work, it'll take some time to bring everybody in. But, um, evidence is there, but there are also some challenges in doing it.
Thank you, Ms. Coramo. Coramo. Correct. For the record, I'd like to recognize that Mr. Starr and Mr. Wilson has joined us, and Mr. Flynn has been excused. We're now down to attend the item and receive shared services. And I believe the school district has an item to be presented. Would you like to speak on that?
Um, yes, and I believe you have staff here. Thank you.
Um, uh, yes, our board president, Mr. Gustaf Ester, asked that we begin a conversation. Uh, that has been a charge, actually, uh, in, uh, the mayor speaking to me too, and as well for our board president, in regard to what are some ideas, what can we do? So our two staff have, have joined, and I can begin with, uh, Mr. Tom Roth. He's our Chief Business, uh, Chief of Operations. And, uh, he can, he can begin, and then also if city staff are here, it's those folks who, uh, they have that. So we'll, we'll start with Mr. Roth.
Thank you, Dr. Coramo, and through the chair. Uh, thank, thank for the opportunity to, to address both the Assembly and, and the school board. And I, I just want to start off by saying, um, you know, I, I personally am very optimistic about, you know, our relationship, our ongoing relationship as, as a school district and a municipality. And I'd just like to offer a few comments, uh, upfront. You know, three, three areas that, that we are working very closely with the municipality right now, uh, which I think have great promise and potential for both the school district and the municipality are the areas of energy efficiency projects in utilities, specifically with, uh, the MLMP. And then just recently, we had a conversation with the, the Chief Fiscal Officer, and, and we're looking at the potential for combining our sharing services in healthcare. So, so just to kind of give you my, my assessment of, of some of the strengths I would offer to, to both the Assembly and to the school board. I, I would submit to you, the strengths are really in the senior and the mid-level manager areas. I would tell you that, that both organizations have incredibly dedicated and committed and mission-focused employees. And, and I would, I would submit to you that, that, that willingness to collaborate and cooperate between both the ASD and the municipality is extremely strong and robust. Our mid-level managers are meeting daily, quite frankly, and looking for opportunities to work together. I would, I would offer from, from an improved standpoint, one thing that, that we need to do better at the senior level, and I cannot submit this to Mike Abbott as a recommendation to Mr. Currie, is at the senior level, we need to prevent or provide more opportunities of creating more deliberate systems to meet and to define where those issues are, where those opportunities exist for us to collaborate and share services. So we are gonna do that, and, and my meeting again with Mr. Harris the other day was a part of that. Some of the challenges, and, and I've had an opportunity to talk to both parties last, or earlier this year, you know, some of the things that, that we worked through, for, for starters, we, we operate on different fiscal years, and that's a challenge when we talk about budgets and how we, how we procure things. Our IT systems are generally different. We have, we have labor differences. We, we have different unions for our, our organized labor. And then, quite frankly, our missions are different. Um, we, we have different priorities and responsibilities. So, you know, these are some of the challenges that we've worked through. What, what I'd like to very briefly highlight, though, coming back to my being of the optimism, and, and share this, just to, just to focus on what I, what I think is very positive and some of the accomplishments that we've had, some very recently, as most are aware. In the media, it was, it was, uh, announced that we now have student access to, to our public libraries courtesy of, of the municipality. Um, we've combined our channels. We now operate on a single television channel. As I mentioned to you, in, in utilities, we're currently in conversations with Mark Johnston at the municipal lighting power for the, the district to be a customer to MLMP. The, the benefit to the district is we stand to gain or lower our utility costs significantly. And MLMP has a big customer, a consistent customer for the procurement of their natural gas. Uh, we are in discussions, uh, with, with MLMP also on, on high-efficiency condensing boilers for our pools, both for our costs as well as those for the municipality. We are gonna come forward on a recommendation for an energy efficiency program that both the municipality and the district can benefit from, and that would involve LED lighting projects, uh, high, high-efficiency condensing boilers, and just retro commissioning our facilities. We are, we do and have in the past and continue to do, we, we, we market our insurance policies, our insurance premiums together, and, and, and our insurance broker clients, that that saves both municipality and the district over ten percent in our premiums. For, for the district specifically, that's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. I would imagine the municipality savings are comparable. Uh, we bulk purchase items, typically commodities, tires and those things that both the municipality and the district require, and we load up our costs through that process. We've combined our recruiting for APD. I'm sorry, I'll pause for, for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Starr.
No, I can wait.
You can wait, Mr. Mayor.
I'll wait just a while.
Okay, thank you. Please continue.
Um, we, we have great cooperation through, uh, with our Anchorage Police Department, our Fire Department, uh, the, the Emergency, uh, Management Office, Kevin Spillers and his operations, and we're very well-integrated with the, the emergency response systems within, within the municipality. Lastly, just to offer, uh, the district, as many know, we are transitioning to, uh, acronym is called ALICE. It's a, it's a revised, uh, system to respond to an armed intruder or attacker in our schools. And we've extended to the municipality the potential to conduct training, offer training slots, if it's a, if it's that something that the municipality would like to pursue. So, again, to kind of come back full circle is, I'm tremendously optimistic about the interaction that is happening between the municipality and the district. Uh, there's obviously tremendous room to continue and to seek further opportunities to do that, but, but again, it, it is happening, and it is effective and working time. So I'll stop there, Madam Chair, and open for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Mr. Starr.
Thanks for the perspective of the management level conversations, where your share in services at the decision-making level, that has probably some intrigue to me as well, that, um, facilities managers and those that make decisions cooperatively, it's not uncommon to that. Logistics is another one, the fleet of trucks for delivery and distribution. That would also be an avenue perhaps to look at. Maybe you do it better than the city does in terms of just-in-time deliveries. Uh, the ASD fleet, it seems to be all present, particularly around the scheduled food service. So, uh, that, that leads me more towards the brass talks of the shared services definitions. I represent the Chuyake River area. I would throw out now that we looked at the shared services for snow clearing. Um, you talk about the separate missions, but, um, our, our snow clearing contracts don't adhere similar to the municipalities with the seventy-two-hour rule. We're out, we're out right away, and it's oftentimes frustrating to see the ASD fleet and the parallel city services fleet. You know, with our city services fleet, for example, running middle school, they have to go out of their way to do a three-point turn to get out of there as opposed to doing a bus clearing lane for that. We do have some success stories with the shared services that have just sort of happened because of need, and I don't know that it's a budget line item, it just gets the job done. Our Parks and Rec Department, um, in numerous cases, plows, uh, the, the walking paths for, um, both Ravenwood School as well as Chuyake River High School. They're out there first, and that's a Parks and Rec service that just comes to the aid from that. So, um, you know, as that gets quantified into, into dollars, I think you, you actually could add them up pretty quick. But the idea that the missions are different is also there. I, I have a caustic side of my personality, where at an assembly meeting, I held up a picture of a street sweeper, a brand-new one, on ASD's property. I think we have five or six of them. The non-critical service, I don't find that the street sweeping criteria, gravel pickup in the spring meets the education mission for my definition. It's much more of an operations development. So I had four, five, the eight-by-ten glosses. My question flippantly was, why does the school district own this, uh, sort of thing? So encourage you to drive the, the facilities and look at it. There's probably a ten-thousand-dollar Harley rake. If you don't know what a Harley rake is, it's for soils preparation tied into landscaping. There's a brand-new one in ASD's facilities. I, I just questioned how that gets into that mission statement that you so eloquently put, that the missions are different. Well, then adhere to that to, to a certain degree and say, education is this. Let us streak this, you know, sweet streak and get the, the snow clearing programs under control. But I started the conversation with, if you need a test bed, financial test bed or not, I can bring the parties together for the CHVI, whoever's schools, and bring the operations facilities directly to that conversation. And we'll put quantified numbers to it and start this year if you want. I, I see no obstacles other than sort of bureaucracy that prevents it. The labor contracts, I found the labor unions to be very agreeable to the conversation. Uh, they all want to be paid in job security, but, um, when they see the mission statement out there, uh, that's great. So as you need to facilitate and foster those conversations, um, look to us to do that. But right now, I put on the record, Chuyake River schools can do it, uh, along with our, with our shared services contracts, uh, quickly.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Starr. Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much. You know, these are challenging times for us here, and we do not have the luxury of conducting business the way that we have in the past, especially given what's going on at the state level. And to me, there's a simple test that we have to apply to, to any kind of shared services. We have to look at what the cumulative savings will be. We're not parsing it between the school district and municipality. Taxpayers write one check. They don't write one to the school district and one to, to the municipality. And so, when we can find opportunities to save money, we have to pursue those. And I appreciate that there's ongoing studies and there's concerns about how this is gonna happen. It has to happen, and it has to happen fast. And so, uh, the, the instructions I've given to Mr. Abbott are to make these things move. And we have offered, uh, shared service opportunities with fleet maintenance, for example, with risk management, even with rental services. There's some emergency preparedness and planning that we need to pursue, capital project purchasing. We need also to look at some of the, the school district lands. The municipality has, um, suggested that there's some school district lands that might be, uh, better suited to, to, to develop it, uh, rather than be a warehouse for a potential future use for the schools. We need to act now, and we do not have an under-spun. We do not have the luxury of studying and procrastinating and postponing. And from our side of the table, uh, I've made that very clear, and I would hope that we will find a willing partner with the school district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Trainey.
You mentioned LED lights. We had a meeting yesterday with MLMP. They're going to LED lights, just trying to unify that system with Chuyake River MBA and, and MLMP. What have you guys talking about the type of LED lights? I know you guys probably have sodium lights in your schools. These, these LEDs have a sensor, they can only put on a grid. So you can shut them down and bring them up, and intensely, and duration as long as you want. So I would suggest you give it MLMP to save on a Joe purchase. At least last fifteen years versus sodiums, that you never know. And these will tell you when they're going bad. I appreciate MLMP leading it. I wish you guys are talking about it, so we got one system for these lights.
And through the chair, if I might just respond to that. We, we have had a discussion with, uh, Mr. Johnson and, uh, Mr. Agron on that specific topic for the exterior lighting for, for light posts. And we are in, in conversations, and it looks like it's a great opportunity for us, and that's what I'd like to hear on that.
Good, I appreciate that. I think it would be buses where the kids come out of East High School. We had a system where they could ride the bus for free and get home, the city bus. And I'm told the money's not there.
We, we, uh...
Can I tell what's going on?
So we have, uh, transit has given bus passes virtually to all high school students.
For the whole year?
Yeah.
Good, good. Thanks.
Through the chair, just to respond to that, that, that is a, a great, um, program that, that the municipality has reinstated for the school that had it last year, and then expanded the program to include other schools. So, uh, I, I think about fifteen thousand students potentially now would benefit from that offer, and, and again, just to, to highlight the relationship between the, the Director of Transportation, Mr. Palia, uh, Abdul Hamud, and Chuck Moore, our Director of People Transportation. Those two gentlemen talk weekly on this, on this and other subjects.
Thank you. Just want to make sure it's happening. Take the minute, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Trainey. Mr. Steele.
Oh, we've got a lot of stuff. The, um, with regards to the, uh, bus passes, I mean, that's, that's great news, I think, in terms of, uh, getting more people in the buses and, uh, providing them a opportunity to, uh, to ride at different times rather than just making the school, uh, asleep in the school. The problem, what I see that needs to be overcome is, um, is that it doesn't cover everything. And so you're still gonna have to add other routes or, uh, the efficiency issue, I guess, is what it is. You can have buses, well, and pat that, uh, school buses, I think, but still have to provide the service officers. The, um, um, savings, I think, has to, has to also consider the mission. Uh, the, the snowplows that, uh, Mr. Starr mentioned. Uh, when, when you get a big dump in the middle of the night, who has priority? Get the school started cleaning that up or, or running down the highways? Uh, that's the biggest issue, I think, in terms of being able to get, get the job done. The schools have to do it before the kids arrive, before the cars arrive. Once they arrive, they're in trouble. And, uh, and same thing with highways, you gotta get the highways clean before you get a bunch of cars over there. So, but there's a lot of things that's gonna have to be worked out on that. But in terms of sharing services, we definitely need to do, we need to do, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Mr. Gustaf Ester?
Yeah, um, I had written down about the, the people mover and the bus passes for the kids, but I'm delighted to hear it's for all schools, because I didn't realize that.
It's not quite across the, which, it's, uh, East, uh, Bartlett. I think it's standard, includes less high school.
Stellar.
And, and a couple of small stellar, say, I, I don't have the list in front of me.
Safe, and then save.
But the big ones were, were the high schools.
Okay, I, I was, you'll be rejoiced, I think it was all schools.
No, we're, we're getting there.
Okay.
I mean, I think, I think the critical part is what Mr. Steele said, is that some of those schools, South Service, Chuyake, are, uh, less, well...
Right. And, and I want to clarify for people who are wondering why this is useful, because I've had some experience with the kids telling me that this allows them to stay after school, if they don't have internet resources at home, to go to the library and use those to seek extra help tutoring or participating activities. And so it expands that opportunity for students to do that. And they become familiar with, uh, with the people mover system to use potentially later, because I've had students who say, oh, I have an app, I'll, I'll figure that out right now. I know how to get from such-and-such on Saturday to...
Yeah, we have a new app, too.
A new app? Okay, wonderful.
New and better app.
So I very, very much appreciate that, and I want to thank the administration on that. Um, and then the other piece, I just want to say, it's just a blanket statement, because we've, over the years, we've had, um, discussions about shared services a number of times. And, um, sometimes I've been, um, teased by, uh, from the Anchorage School District about, uh, being too frugal. But when you talk, when someone, I've had the state have said, oh, it's only two-hundred-thousand-dollar savings. Um, I want to make sure that we aren't putting that to the side, because two-hundred thousand to me is several teachers, and the mayor talked about how many, his officers. And so, uh, I really want us, even if it's two-hundred thousand dollars, I think we need to pursue it. We need, we need to be very frugal at these times and find all the savings that we can.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. You too. Dr. Coramo.
Hi, yes, Madam Chair. I just wanted to respond to Mayor, Mayor Berkowitz, that, uh, the board has made it loud and clear to me in regard to, uh, shared services and, and the idea that the staff understands we're, we're not just going to talk and admire the problem again, that we actually need to bring outcomes back to both bodies. Um, and that really, um, in a conversation with the mayor earlier, that's what it was about, because as the president had mentioned, it, this isn't a new idea, um, but it is new that we are saying we absolutely have to have, uh, different outcomes. Um, and, uh, when we just say, well, we tried, we tried, that's just, that, um, that's not what it's about. It's not about admiring it and talking about it. It actually is, what is the outcome of how we're, um, saving, uh, money in our city? And whether it's for, um, city services or schools? How are we going to keep them up here?
Thank you, Mr. Coramo. Mr. Higgins? Are you on the list?
No, I mean, I was, okay.
No, there.
Thank you. Mr. Croft.
Um, I appreciate both of what, um, uh, the new superintendent and, uh, Mayor Berkowitz said. I think, I think this issue has surprised me about how slow, I'm used to government acting slowly, but this issue has seemed so obviously beneficial and yet so difficult to implement, um, over, uh, over decades, really, that, um, I'm old enough now in politics to remember the, the years when constituents and youth members would complain about seeing state and muni snowplows with the graders up, not grading, because, and we'd have to explain back in the nineties, that's because it's a state road or a municipal road, and they always looked at us like, well, that's just stupid. Um, it never was an adequate explanation. And finally, um, under Mayor, uh, Beckett, uh, they, they reached a cooperative agreement and divided up the city, and they renegotiated. And it was insolvable in, until it was done, right? It was, it seemed like you could never get over union or timing or other issues, and then you found a way to do it, and now it makes so much more sense. You don't have those complaints. They complain about other things now. But, um, but it, and I just know that while there are legitimate difficulties, these things are very solvable. Um, if you, maybe I missed it in the list, but the most obvious to me is, with all the, uh, lawn maintenance, uh, the grass maintenance, all the mowing capability we have that we have to use in the municipality, somewhere, it would be so easy to just do the fields that you have. And very little cost, you guys, it's not a high priority for you guys, obviously, in your budgets, the first thing we cut on the school board for good reason. You don't want to cut a teacher, you cut lawn maintenance. But it, but it is sad when it looks horrible, so it's, it's easy to do. Similarly, and tough, the school district manages so many more buildings than the municipality, and it'd be tough for the municipality to say, we manage a hundred-plus buildings, we can manage ten more. Um, again, there, I know there are turf and union and other restrictions, but it, it just seems obvious to me that the municipality cutting ASD's grass and possibly ASD managing, uh, our buildings, now our buildings, uh, makes sense, as well as a lot of the other things that, that you mentioned. Um, one that, uh, didn't get mentioned, that we talked about the school district that I intend to bring up for the municipality, is using our health insurance bargaining power to get better rates from local, we have, you know, growing up here, we had a mix of good and bad doctors, I believe. Sometimes you would want to go to see a... Sometimes you would want to go to Seattle to get better care. I think we've gotten a much more professional medical coverage up here. But often, I think, some of the specialists are overcharging compared to lower-forty-eight rates. And using our power to not, you know, they'll still make a good living, but knock that down, some could save us a tremendous amount. And it's the buying power of the muni and the unions that are represented by those and the ASD that I think can get that done and provide real savings.
Thank you, Mr. Croft. Mr. Mayor?
So there's, the healthcare thing is actually, you know, we're talking about knocking off either the $200,000 shot. The healthcare cost is the second largest budget I've ever seen. We pay, work back to fifty, sixty million dollars a year, the healthcare costs. We think that there is huge potential there. I know the school district just put out an RFP for doing its own clinic. It's something that we are actively working at, participating. The increase in size of the pool is significant. We're not so sure. We have cumulative rate between the school district and the municipality, enough market force to make a difference. But maybe if we layer in state employees who are here, some of the nonprofits. And these are sort of moving pieces that are happening also in the state. Because if we limit the notion of shared services simply to the school district and the municipality and the community, some other opportunities. There is one particular thing that make the school district can help us with. Insofar as, insofar as the healthcare issue goes. The state has what they call eighty percent rule, which effectively bumps municipal payments by about $3 million a year. And I'm sure the school district can suffer from that as well. If you have the school district's assistance in persuading the state that they hit away with the eighty percent.
Eighty percent of what?
You, doc, we, if there's specialty doctors, you pay eighty percent of the cumulative rate. But if there's only a few doctors, you don't want to be the guy who tells your neighbor, doctor, that you're not going to be able to do these expensive things. And they intend to drive up inflationary rates. It's not how it's done in any other place. The cost of municipality alone is about $3 million a year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Cora?
Most of stuff got brought up. No need to go over again. But I do want to thank the muni for hosting our internal auditor, which is essential for us. It's one of the first shared services we went to, but it's a huge, huge benefit for us to also help us look at saving costs in other areas.
Thank you, Mr. Cora. Mr. Trainee?
I will just step into the pit. You know, I go there anyway. Building and maintenance is a problem. The MOA gave that to the school district in eighty-four by organs, the bulk destruction maintenance. We need to take a look at that, as you're saying here, to figure out where it fits best at. Because I don't see the ASD constructing more schools, given the state's funding for us is going to be non-existent. But we do need to figure out how to do maintenance better and then save money while we can. The other thing would be, we do want the school to take a look at healthcare for our school district employees. I know that right now, the school district, let's say you've got an employee whose healthcare is taken care of by their spouse's healthcare. You'd still donate that money to the union. Why?
We just got rid of that.
We got rid of that.
In the last contract that got...
So it's not going there anymore?
No, it's at least cycling out on the teacher's contract. Yeah, we renegotiate it.
So one is completely cycled out. Because I'm just wondering how much money you guys were spending doing that. It was being paid more by another insurance company.
It's not taking it.
Sorry, it's not one?
Through the chair, Mr. Trainee. It is no longer placed into an account, but the account is being driven down by paying healthcare costs. So soon the account will, well, that's the attrition that's happening, is that the account is being used for healthcare. But there isn't any more dollars being placed in the account.
Thank you very much. Is that what's driving the unit, that's real? I appreciate it.
Any comments, Mr. Trainee?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Trainee. Do you have?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to go back to the idea of moving all schools over to MLP power. And I was wondering, is, what, how much investment would that take? Because I know many of the schools are currently on Tugac electric lines. And how would all, how would that work? Does anyone know?
Mr. Steele?
Yeah, you got to go with the services. Who's electricity lines run past the school?
Right. So if we're going to switch to MLP, do we have, does MLP have to invest in a bunch of new lines?
Eagle River would have to. Because Eagle River is Tugac.
We can keep guessing or we can ask you.
So clarifying the services, the chair, this is a purchase of natural gas, not actually electricity from MLP. We'll still use the same Tugac MLP electricity services. But as MLP is producing gas out the inlet, we would buy that directly instead of through in Star's contracts. Because we're the same in September.
Anything else, Mr. Higgins? Mr. Dunbar, you didn't raise your hand, but I know that you had an interest in talking about self-sold. Not to put you on the spot, but would you like to talk about it?
I, actually, I don't recall what you're referring to. I, I'm sure, I really liked the way. But I don't recall talking to you about that.
Well, Mr. Trainee, what's the matter?
If you were talking about Pat Flynn does reversing on his hydrohome, because he's got solar power.
Sure.
So the question was, could the ASD do that by putting solar power on the school building? So that the meter runs back, or that was you discussing it?
In, in the middle school, the Park Middle School should always have had solar panels on the side of it or on the roof. One or the other. It's perf, the aspect is perfect for solar power. And that would be the first one that I would go with it. But, but any that we can do, we should take advantage of.
Because they can generate power in the basement of the grid and your meter starts to run backwards at a certain period of time. And they have the school to save money because you've got a lot of buildings, a lot of schools. So if you decide, some way to look into it would be there to establish support to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Trainee. Mr. Higgins?
I was just going to comment, the gas issue, of course, the purchase wouldn't change at all. You'd still pay a fee for the infrastructure and all that, the same group. But the gas is being purchased directly from MLP. I learned this when I was walking to some house where there's an executive MLP and they gave me the whole layout. And it was kind of interesting and why it wouldn't, it's almost like going swimming. If the rates go cheaper for ASD and MLP benefits off other schools, it would have been, I think.
But I would just say, MLP, that gas is the best gas.
And I'm not going to comment how poor the gas is.
It's worth the extra price.
Anything else, Mr. Higgins?
No, that was...
Thank you, Mr. Muskie.
Uh, thank you. I don't need to say much, but Mr. Muskie's already said. But I just want to ask, where is the discussion? Because I've been asked a couple of times about maybe consolidating schools. Have you guys been looking at that more? I know Eagle River ruining is always a hot topic, so just an update would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Muskie. Dr. Cora?
Sure. Through the chair to, I know it's a... Amy. Amy? Amy, yeah. I don't know what it is, a drama or a drama boss. Sorry. I have a, Polish name, I said. I, we are doing an update to the board. There's actually a study being done on the capacity of schools. And the board will, originally it was set for November, we're moving it up to October. But on there, there are some ideas about usage, and of course, this is of our facilities. The areas that have come up to the chop that are still being looked at are base schools, if you will. There's quite a bit of capacity there, as well as in Eagle River area, Tugac. So we, once we share with the board the report and what we found out, then those decisions will engage the community and figure it out. But those are on the radar, if you will. And it's being looked at, I believe, to October nineteenth, rather than that we were able to get the report back.
Madam Chair, I anticipate this is going to be a very hot topic. So it would be nice if we could have this on the agenda for next week.
Thank you, Mr. Muskie. Any other comments on your services? Mr. Mayor?
Well, I just want to reiterate the question I had about land issues, the school district land. And there's four parcels in particular that, I mean, the subject of discussion. One is the Tugac areas in Beach Lake. There's also questions about West Park, the toll booth theater and the bus park. So we need to make sure that those items are pursued aggressively. That would be much appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments?
I have just a summary. I sat through meetings like this. Who sort of takes ownership of the conversation? Our, and we share services now. Is ASD going to take a summary of the ones we talked about here and give us a working paper on why we can't do it? Mr. Mayor, you seem pretty aggressive to share the services and move forward in that. But I don't see assigned duties thereof. It's, you're willing, they're here. Does somebody come back and give us a status report of why that's not going to work in Eagle River? Or we're going to do this? What happens next?
Well, I would, through the chair, what I would hope happens is that we, very short timeline, get responses as to what we can do and how long it will take to accomplish any of these potential shared services. We're all coming up on budget times. Being able to forecast what costs are going to be is a pretty important feature of the upcoming few months. And so I would hope that we have some answers really.
Well, I don't want to pontificate, but you're exactly right in the conversation about when the constituent base writes a check. So what I want to know, when I study the budget, Ms. Gray Jackson and I are very good at it, from the perspective of if I have to increase the subversive road clearing budget at the same time I reduce the ASD commitment for plowing snow at Ravenwood or Bruning or Igor River High School, I'll do it. Mr. Croft's left, but it is very frustrating to see the two fleets cross paths. They're out there at the same time. Mr. Steele, it may not be that they clear it entirely, but they'll get teacher parking done, they'll get the bus lanes, they'll get the sidewalks done. And then they'll come back. They're good at it. And so I think we just have to have the ownership of the conversation so that when budgets come, if I've got to grow the snow clearing budget out in my aspect and reduce it in the other side, the dollars will ultimately net gain for the taxpayer who has to write that single check. And I think it's efficiencies. There's absolutely no efficiencies in two fleets and two drivers and two schedules and two overtimes and heavy snows. And so even if we just look better because we're cooperative, there's got to be some savings in there. Get the overtime reduced because of sharing dump trucks or, you know, it isn't, it isn't that hard. I mean, I guess I'm with Mr. Croft in the frustrations. We just got to start doing it, and if that didn't work, then let's stop doing it. But I, I'll start sending pictures back with him, why you're sweeping your sidewalks and why we're sweeping ours concurrently. You know, and that doesn't even begin to bring in the whole DOT capacity and their fleets that are parked. But I've got three of them. I got parks in the wreck, I got road clearing, I got DOT, and I got muni fleet sitting out there. That's four. It's a lot of dump trucks, a lot of snow clearing. And we're talking million-dollar budgets. They're well over the $200,000 mark.
But just remember, DOT skews back to...
Fine. I, I will take the capacity. But again, at the end of the day, the users that write the checks, I think, will see a gain if we can cooperatively come together. And let's just start somewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Starr. Mr. Dunbar?
Just really quickly, because it's the first I've heard, but about the land idea. So I'm glad to, Mr. Mayor, perhaps, was it Mr. Roth or Mr. Ross? Roth, if you could comment on that. So you mentioned that parcel next to the toll booth theater. I'm very familiar with that parcel. I helped clear a abandoned homeless camp out of there. And I would love to see a note with that parcel. So how would that look? Would it be transferred to the municipality? Would it be a land swap? What are you talking about exactly?
I would just venture to say, I'm sorry to interrupt, but can we put that on the next agenda or so? Because there's a lot to that. I, the parcel you mentioned about the Beach Lake Park has developable land. So, Mr. Dunbar, I can show you offline. If there is four, I've got one that's ready to launch. But it's very complicated. We can talk about it today, but it's pretty big.
Thank you.
Yeah.
There are any comments, Mr. Dunbar? Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Mr. Steele?
Two more quick things. Did, Mr. Mayor, did you say that the gravel pit area was one of those that you thought was on market? Because we have a couple of parcels down there that...
And look, if there's any land that is of interest to the school district, we need to move on this. The other one that interests me tremendously is a replacement for this building. We spent a lot of money on this building. And if we're closing Central Middle School or some other sites, we may want to think about, certainly with Central, we've got emergency preparedness, there are schools on that little block. And it might not be a bad idea to think about a current building rather than what we, what we paid for this building. So just to get that on the table.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. And I have a comment. I have to tell you, I'm really, really excited here in this conversation. And I'm excited because for over twenty years, I'm a staff of seventy, that happened in the early seventies. We've been talking about sharing services, but nothing ever happened. I really appreciate everybody's comments, but in particular the mayor's comments, because I think that he's serious. And I think, based on what he had to say, that he's going to take the lead in bringing this all together. Because we really need to do something, and we need to do it now. No, we're trying to play around about shared services. This is serious business, and we have to make things happen. Downstairs, there's about two file cabinets full of stuff about shared services that have been kept over the years. So if anybody wants to look at those files, there may be some things that are kind of helpful. But thank you again for the conversation. And that's agenda item, is donor's veto, bond debt reimbursement. Anybody to take real next?
I just want to preface it, and then I'll turn it over to the administration. We had a discussion at our last board meeting about, there was a question about ASD having, not having a lobbyist. We've had one, I think, since the early eighties. And obviously, I don't think this is a time to even consider adding expenses to our budget, our strain budget. But we thought it might be useful to have a discussion about how we can combine our efforts in going to Juneau to talk about the bond debt reimbursement issue. And maybe it's not a full-time employee serving, or an employee, contractor serving as a lobbyist, but maybe that's a shared service that we can do together in getting the message that when they shift that bond debt reimbursement to local taxpayers, they haven't reduced the budget. They may have reduced their budget, but they haven't reduced the cost.
Mr. Mayor?
Madam Chair, yeah, in response, absolutely, we would be happy to look at ways we can make more use of the ones we have working down at Tugac. Especially expanding the mission. For me, and the bond debt issue transcends the budgetary piece of it, I think. That was the kind of veto that has bigger consequences than just the dollars. Bond, when you make a commitment to pay the bond, there is a moral obligation, there was a law that you had to treat with that moral obligation. On the state's side is incredibly troubling to a taxpayer.
And then I'd like to refer to the superintendent. Mr. Trainee, I'll move it to the first thing.
What the state did was terrible because a few years passed and Congress told them, told the taxpayers, don't worry, the state's going to anticipate. They've got a history of fulfilling the costs. They sure they dropped their promise on the ground and ran away top of it. How do we recall the voters again and tell them, oh, the state's going to fund sixty percent? And voters are going to say, sure, what happened last year? So really, where is they? Because I don't see us being able to bond. The voters aren't going to approve it. The state went far and done what they thought they were going to do by doing this. It's the best of the half, so.
Thank you, Mr. Trainee. Dr. Cora?
I guess I would just finish up with the conversation we have, identifying the, some funds in our debt service fund for which we're going to put towards the 10.8 million. But that is, I think, the elephant in the room in regard to the full entire payment in regard to the portion for which the state denied the payment, which they had paid, you know, they took away twenty-five percent of the seventy-five percent that they paid. And so it is 10.8. We, there was a request from the assembly for the underserved fund balance from the school district. But really, that issue, I believe, is what was, is on the table. Certainly, working cooperatively and I, you know, with the, I guess, incarceration, increasing costs also is another example. The same type of not really cutting government, but shifting.
But that is keeping the board.
So we are not sure, we have discussions that that is unresolved, that both parties have been wanting.
Thank you, Mr. Cora. Mr. Trainee?
Dr. I want to know, what is the fund balance currently of the school district? Because I had an estimate done. It's $129 million on your fund balance, down $12 million from last year. What is the unrestricted fund balance that ASD has right now? If you'd like to know that, because that way I don't have to figure it out myself. I want to be experts. So I heard it was $129 million. And if you've got that much money, then you need to figure out how we're going to be improving maintenance using part of that money. So I see the voters aren't going to prove anything right now. There's so much else to offer.
So, through the chair, the total general fund reserve is $129 million. That is not unassigned. Many of those projects are, for example, we did share with you, so I'm not sure of the folks and the business. We are replacing the water line at Goldenview. We are replacing the water line at Goldenview. A lot of those funds were, the board approved this in June to replace the roof at the end. So there are projects that is for Wi-Fi, or kind of IT. Charter school balance alone is at $129, it's $7 million, that's a state law here. So the general fund is $129, of unassigned is $29.
$29, okay. That's what I wanted to know, Doctor.
Any other comments on this subject, Mr. Park?
Maybe I'll just also comment further. The stats says at the end of FY16, 1516, we've already, as a result of some of the vetoes, spent some of those dollars, somewhere between $3 and $4 million. If you take that into account, we have that just for this year, not even taking into account what our, what emergency needs we're going to have this year or for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Park. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the data dashboard. Just like the...
Hi, yes, Madam Chair. This was a request, sure, these are the, yeah, we'll have them on there. This was a sharing at the request of the school board to share information that is occurring in our school district. And I, I have this presentation, I don't know if I should stand up, is that better? Or am I hurt, okay, here? So the data dashboard is basically fulfilling two goals. So one, when I was hired as the superintendent of schools, I did have a serious conversation with the board in regard to what is the lift here? What is it that you would like? And of course, student achievement in all aspects of the work, not in a test score, but we want the opportunities for our students to increase, to, to build capacity in our kids so that when they leave us, they are able to, you know, have access to university training, access to work, military, without, if you will, a, a ceiling put upon them. So not only that, but they wanted and desired more transparency from administration and from our system to build capacity for the work that we do. So the data dashboard is data that is extant, which means that it's data that's already there. We didn't recreate it. We captured data from D, from internal, right now attendance and suspensions and test scores are already reported to D. They just lie in different areas. We captured internal data to be able to place it together into a system, and it was internally built by Mr. Fleckenstein, our, our chief IT person. And his folks built this with a program called Tableau. The, it is 10,000 feet. This is not going to identify kids, it doesn't identify teachers. This is to look at trends, to see where are we as a school district? And if we are serious about improvement, where do we need to go? Another item I just want to share is the fable of the elephant. And you may have heard of the elephant and the blind men. Sometimes they say seven blind men, sometimes they say five. And certainly, the fable goes where, it's an old Indian fable, where they were blind, so they touched different parts of the elephant, and they couldn't agree, that they couldn't figure out what it was, because somebody had the trunk, somebody had a tusk, somebody had a, a tail, and they did not agree on the type of animal it was. But once they started working cooperatively, seeing a bigger picture, they could then identify the need or what the elephant was. In, in this case, the data needs to be taken as a whole and looked at as a whole. So one piece pulled out, we can make many assumptions, but the goal from the school board is to look at where we are and where we need to go. So with that, we've worked with it internally. Internally, it can drill down to less than 10 kids a classroom. And if that's the case, then you could potentially identify those kids. So we fall under FERPA rules, which is the Privacy Act of Student Data. And so we can see that, because we are educational professionals, and if it's misused, your certificate's taken away. But on the public side, we are in beta testing a public side to where the thresholds for students in the class wouldn't be too low. Because it literally, if you've ever ordered something online, whether it be REI or Nordstrom's, and you just have a few clicks, you know, "I want this department, I want, you know, women's clothes, I want this size and this color and this type of clothing." You drill down, and then you finally get your answer. This data dashboard works the same way. I want to know about this big picture, and then I want to drill it down to see what are the student groups and how are we doing? Essentially, with what we've done and the board's asked, we talked about it as a cast went out of the bag. These data are now where we are, and the goal is not an "I gotcha" for staff, or not an "I gotcha" for anyone that I work for, but the only way that we can succeed it is if we bring everybody forward. We can't live where we are when we see the data, but the data's going to tell us the what. What's out there in our school district? Where are we achieving? Where are our shortfalls? The next part, and, and these are just, this helps staff understand, it's the so what? So what do we know about that? And what do we think? And what's the next question that leads to the next question? So that we can start solving it, which is the now what. Again, I'm not one to admire a problem like shared services. I've heard the chair say for 20 years even more than that. I'm actually outcome-based and achievement-based, if you will, so now we need to figure it out once it's out there. And that is, the now what are we going to do? But certainly, this has been an aha in our, our schools and with our community groups. So this is a one picture of what it looks like. There's four different areas, and this is early learning. And this is just two years, although you can pull back three, three years, because we want to look at trend data, but if you look up at the left-hand side, it really will give the N, how many kids are in the district? And then it moves over to how many, then as I make these clicks about the information I want, what am I looking at? This certainly is early data, and it's in the fall, and I, I can't see, it's letter...
Letter naming.
Letter naming fluency. We know that that is a pre-skill for reading, so this is a K1 data. And these two years, as you can see, what happens, the first one is what happens in the fall, the middle of the year, and the spring. Just for these two years, I could pull up the last seven years, and we have had data that looked identical. So the spring in the spring is identical, meaning we haven't moved the needle. That no more than 67% of our kids then leave us ready for that next level. And we know that those key things, the goal is to get 80 to 85% of students. We can say and look at which schools have more kids getting it. And if we have a 60% average, the mean, we know that some schools are probably upwards of 100 kids ready, and then there's other schools that have about 20 kids ready. That is what's happening in our school district. So we need to take a look at these data and understand, you know, the root cause. What are we going to do to bring achievement up for all of our students? If you look, another piece of data is high school on track. That means, we know information that Fs, and a student earning an F in high school is an indicator of being at risk and, and not completing. That is national evidence in research. So we created this and dropped in the last three years of high school kids who received an F on a report card. The yellow, the blue, and the black up top represent different school years. What do you notice again? It hasn't changed, it's stayed the same. One in three students in our school district, and it's unacceptable to me, it's unacceptable to board, are earning an F, which means one in three are, are then at risk of not completion. And the F, this isn't a message to say, "Don't give Fs." This is a message, this is just an indicator that says what's going on in our classrooms that we need to change, but some students aren't achieving, some students aren't learning as we'd like them to. And so I've had many conversations with teacher groups that says, "What? You just want me to don't give Fs?" And it's like, if it was easy as that, that would have already been done. It's about the learning experiences that happen. On the bottom, you know, we can look at, the map will tell us where the information is and the hot spots, if you will. But also the colored bars on the bottom, and we'll have a handout for you as well. But this is going to be public in October. Those are the core subjects for which those data are grabbed. So it gives you the number of Fs in a particular construct or course. So there's language arts, mathematics, science, and so you can go down and down. And you can actually drill down to every single course that we offer, from art to PE to health to ROTC. You can capture data about how students are doing. But this just leads you to ask a question, and it did us. Where are we, where or whom are the students who are making Fs? It allows us to drill down. And in our school district, you saw it was about 29%, so nearly one in three. But these are our student groups that show a discrepancy or an educational difference in achievement through our student groups. And so we're beginning to talk about this and to see, you know, look at our practices. It's, it's not, when these data come back, like this, it's not a time to look out the window and say, "Whoa, you know, parents must do this, or so-and-so must do this, or that kid this." It's, this demonstrates a time to look in a mirror and say, what's happening in our schools and what isn't happening in our schools to allow for achievement for all students to be successful. So that is the data from FY16, which was last school year. So the entire last school year, half of our Alaska Native students did receive, earned an F. Then you see our other items. And, and these are marked, and you've heard the word disproportionality data. This demonstrates a disproportionality in achievement in our schools. Another question might come from this about, which we are allowed to say, so why is this? Some other indicators that we know lead to success in schools is attendance. Whom are the students who are attending or not? We actually then drill down, we have attendance online, so that we can look at attendance with our students, attendance in different school areas, and attendance during certain times of the year. The big drop is November, that's right before Thanksgiving. Yes?
Madam Chair, ask us a question.
Certainly, and then, Mr. Wood.
So perhaps just on the next slide, but do you, do you collect socioeconomic data as well? Household income? If so, can you do a cross with the, with the racial data? Can you do a regression analysis that sort of shows which of those is more impactful?
Through the chair, yes, we can. And in fact, you'll be able to do it as well, because socioeconomic is one of the tabs for which you can look, rather than just student groups. But I want to let you know that...
Is it cross, is it cross-reference with the racial data?
Yes, you can, you can, yes, you can cross-reference anything, boys, girls, ethnicity. You can cross-reference socioeconomic, you can cross-reference ELL, Language Learners. So, but I want to let you know that it isn't in our school district a poverty issue, because we, we have students who are not in the lower SES socioeconomic status who also still don't achieve. So it's a, it's a little bit of both. So when we did the regression analysis, it isn't, certainly for white and Asian, it, it's not.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar, Mr. Wood.
Actually, that was my question, but it was stated much better than I would have, and the answer was better than expected, so.
And just so you know, this, this has a power. So all these dropdowns that you see there, you could go back to the F, and you can, there's five dropdowns there, and then you can continue to drop it down. So then I want to look at ethnicity, sex, socioeconomic status, first-year English language learners at Bartlett. You can drill down, I mean, it's very, very powerful. But what, the beta test now is that we just cannot get a classroom lower than 10 that anyone could drill down to. So the, an algorithm is being used on it now to, to block any of those classes that would be. And again, it's for identification of children, because this won't share teachers. Normally, it shares children, it is just going to share schools.
Mr. Marson?
I'd like to just expand on what Dr. Pramo said. Not only is this the first time we've, we've been able to gather this data, but we are also putting together what we have not had, well, I guess we have had it, but not consolidated, a strategic plan. And so what we are starting to put together now through Dr. Pramo and the staff is, okay, we see these, we're kind of trying to figure out the why, but what are we doing to address and how are we measuring that? So those are some new things that you're going to see from the school district that's going to be transparent. You're going to be able to see it. We're putting those together now. So not only do you see our goals, but you're going to see how we're going to address those goals, how we're going to make them happen, and how we're going to measure them. And it's going to be the same thing with these types of challenges that we're looking at.
Thank you, Mr. Marson, this is Bosick.
Yeah, and again, I don't want to still be in a slumber, but this is an example. When, when the public is going to have access to this information, they too are going to be able to generate questions. Why is this? I mean, you may be looking at this attendance and go, "Whoa, what happened in November? Where you have this huge dip last year?" And then we have to go back and look at some of the trend data. Was, was that when we had the big flu epidemic hit here? I, I know a lot of people had the flu shot, but it didn't matter. This was one that was resistant to that flu shot, and there was a huge, I know, many adults were. So it'd be interesting, talking about shared services, it'd be interesting to put employee data information from the MUNI and the district to the CFP city, similar trends, particularly with attendance. But this, this is powerful for, for opening this up and getting questions that maybe we haven't even thought about. It'd be interesting.
Thank you, Mr. Marson. Mr. Trainor?
Doctor, do we have a way to figure out the length of time these students have been in the ASD school? For example, if you grew up in the village, were in the ninth grade in the village, and you come into Anchorage, you don't have a cultural background to achieve success in somebody's school. Because I know what education is, it's statewide, that's not reality. So do we, can we figure that out?
Through the chair, we, we can, we will know how far the data go back according to when they come into ASC, so we can figure that out, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so if, some of the questions then are asked, well, what about attendance? Are students coming here? And on this end, the longer the bar, the better the data. So we look at attendance, this is a goal that who is achieving 90% or better? 80% of our Asian community is achieving 90% or better. So you can take a look at where, whom are the kids that are attending school? Another question that this really raised for, was, for, for principals came back and said, "This really has a lot to do with our in-school and out-of-school suspension, and our grading practice, and the availability to make up work." Our teacher shared that with us, that they're sometimes, because of policy, held back from doing the work. So then you can look at suspensions. Who in our school district are in and out-of-school suspended? So basically, essentially, these kids that are missing the instruction that they need to achieve. This, if we take ASD students with behavior offenses, and these are just to demonstrate where we are and where we need to go. So if you look at behavioral offenses, and this is in and out of school, so means even in, in school suspension, they were taken out of the learning environment. These are our data again, and you can demonstrate the disproportionality in whom the students are. A disproportionality would be that if whatever makeup that, that student has, so white now in our school district is about 48%, I believe, your data should match what your percentage is on the people. So when it's disproportionate, that, that's when you start to ask questions. So the next one is just all three of these items. Again, the orange is a positive data point, the blues are, you know, with an app, you don't want the blue line to be long, but you do want the orange line to be long. But this is just a way that we're then questioning and talking to each other. Who are the kids, where are they? But again, in schools, it goes down to what classes? What are we, what are we teaching? How are we teaching it? What time of day are we teaching it? But it's really come back to longstanding practices in grading and achievement. When we take a student out in one school, they're allowed to make up the assessment when they're leave, when they're left, and in another school, they're not. So we all know that when you have an F, and you earn an F, F represents 60% of this scale of 100. An A only represents 10%. So if a student receives a 59, that is an F, and that is hard to, if you're only averaging, that's hard to find a mean. New best practices are as, say you're taking a chapter test. If I took a midterm and I made a 59, but by the, and I continued my learning, and by the end of that chapter, I was able to make an 80. New grading practices are, it's about the outcome. They earn the 80 because they finally understand, allow them to make up the test before that. So there's some practices that are best practices out there to talk about, but they call zeros killers, that they, they really do drive things down, so. Again, these again are just being looked at. Member Marsette mentioned, we do have goals, we have great partnerships with our community in regard to these goals. The goals were, are, were defined effectively by the board, and I would say our team now has better define those for the work to be done. They were ineffectively described with a target. They were ineffectively described with a target set in the past, and the staff at ASC has really worked on that. And an example of which Ms. Marsette, member Marsette mentioned, is we're getting very specific. We will increase letter naming fluency by this, by this time. So we're not only setting the metric, then we're also pulling back with principals and teachers and district office to say, what are the inputs? What is the professional development? What do we need to do to achieve that? So we're assisting. I want to let everyone know, it wasn't a matter of not doing hard work. I say our employees work hard, this is a matter of identifying the right work. And data help you do that. They help you identify the right work that needs to be done. This is all really for the bigger picture of why are we doing what we're doing? It's to higher achievement, the board wants success in life. Our mission is success in life. And when you do research on life, and people talk about why you get an education both at K-12 and secondary, is to have a great life and great job with the two things that come up. And in education, what we need to do is prepare kids to have both of those. And it does take education to do that, and it takes connections in your school. The new law really allows us to redefine ready. And we used to have NCLB, if you hear it, it's ESSA now, it's called Every Student Succeeds Act. NCLB was based off of a one-test score, and that's what your school received, a label. And certainly, I've shared over and over again that, you know, we all might weigh ourselves and when we step off that scale, we know that that one number or the number on our ID, those numbers don't define us, it's just something about us. Our social security number is one thing about us, but it's not everything. The new law has allowed us to broaden that. And I'm just going to share some of the ideas from which we can create a better education system here of what we know makes kids successful in the workforce. One piece of data that I would love the Assembly to understand, in research, they found that 70% of students who drop out of high school, they actually say leave high school, believers. 70% of them don't move within 10 miles from that high school. So our education, I'd say, challenge, our charge is everyone's charge because it's our community, it's our kids in there. We will, and I don't, you know, we will take care of these kids, whether they're working or not, whether they're achieving or not. They're ours, and so it is better to give them a life, a good life, and hope for their future that they can get a job. So ESSA talks about life-ready skills. Interestingly enough, we're talking about grit, perseverance, growth mindset, and being on the social, emotional side is really how to solve problems, understanding how to work with people. We never heard grit before. Grit comes when you fail something, and then you have to try again. And your dad doesn't do it for you, your teacher doesn't do it for you. You actually, failing is part of learning. And in our lives, that was like that. We had to go home and do chores, and we had to do that. And they are discovering that in, when we only focused on reading, writing, and math, all those other things that created perseverance and grit went away. They also look at college readiness. They do know that there is a relationship between high school GPA and college readiness. There is a relationship there. So we know that we do have to focus on grades with kids and have kids achieving and working towards their achievement and their learning. Academic engagement is important, taking courses such as AP, IB, higher level. We are going to start looking at how many of our Alaska Native kids, how many of our African-American kids are taking AP courses. When you are ready for an AP course, that doesn't happen, although it's given in 10th and 11th grade. AP starts back in sixth grade, with somebody saying, you know how to do this, you are going to take this honors class, you are going to do this. It takes that engagement of the student to understand that that is their line as well. Participation and completion in just college preparatory courses, career pathways. Career technical courses are good for everyone, not just kids going to college. They've demonstrated that career tech, as well as activities you'll see in a little bit, mirror employee employer relationships more than the teacher-student does. Did you hear that? Career technical courses, student engagement in them, whether it be CNA, welding, construction, learning, even if they're going to college, that that more mirrors employee employer than teacher-student. It's true. So if they want to be work-ready, we know that there's lots of opportunities for careers to get right into apprenticeship, especially in Alaska. Career clusters of attendance is important for career-ready community service, not necessarily because kids are doing things, but community service, connection to your community. You network, you start to understand where the jobs are, and you meet people. Workplace learning experience, we all have our own culture, if you will, of how we behave at home, but there is an idea about a workplace culture of showing up on time, putting your phone away, shaking someone's hand, reading someone, working with others. Those are things that we need to offer opportunities in our school. And of course, dual credit is good, and organized co-curriculars, that is huge. So when we talk about how we're going to reduce, one of the things that prepare kids for later on in life are co-curriculars. Because it again mirrors real life more than teacher-student does. Our board has challenged us to just redefine what we mean so that we can educate all students for life. And that is our mission, we spoke about mission earlier. We are driven by our outcomes now, the cat's out of the bag, the data are there, and we're not going to live here, though. We have an opportunity and a challenge to change the learning for kids so that we increase our experiences so that we have the best city ever. There you go. Thanks. Thank you very much. That was really great. Any comments or questions?
Just briefly, I, this was a long time coming, but I really appreciate the data focus serving on the board. We have a fabulous school district with a lot of fabulous teachers and other employees. I was surprised when I got on how data-averse the district was, how almost data-traumatized it was. I think a mixture of ordinary resistance and some, where data was used sort of as an offensive weapon against schools and labeled schools failing, that that combination somehow had made this district, maybe all districts, if someone said, really data-averse. Really hard to see how you're confronting it. You know, it is not something to be hidden, but it's put out and discussed, and why is this? We're underachieving here, maybe we're doing great here, but we're underachieving here, and why? And only when you do that in this way can we get real results. I sat on a train and became a big Kathy Moffett fan. And so the way you're using data, but also the fact that you have a roving data person, right? A roving problem solver is heartening to me. So I look for good things. I did not see there, and people that serve you on the board will know that I'll bring this up, I did not see growth as opposed to proficiency. And I saw that it remains in one of the progress goals, but you do what's measured, or whatever that quote is, and I didn't see it as a measurement. It continues to be important to me, and so I just wanted to communicate that. Growth is very different than proficiency. And it took me a while of delving in the data to figure out how important that was. Figuring out, you know, grading, how many kids are going to run an eight-minute mile? Some kids came in running an eight-minute mile, and some kids are never going to. And you want to move everybody forward. And if you simply measure proficiency, or even change in proficiency, which is sometimes misunderstood as growth, you miss the fact that you took somebody who couldn't run at all and got them to a 12-minute mile, and that was great. And you took your six-minute milers to five, and that was great. But that, the proficiency measure loses all that. And so it's part of your goal still, that's good. It has to be somewhere in the measurements, or you teach teachers to only get them to barely proficient and drop. And so I don't do that. But I'm very heartened by being upfront and honest with our data because that's the only way we're going to solve it.
Thank you, Mr. Whittleton. Yes, through the chair, to Mr. Whittleton. Actually, you're absolutely correct, and we have, the staff has organized for an assessment called Vectors of Academic Progress to be in all middle schools. Middle school is the place you lose ground with that. And so the guarantee in our, in the board's goals is that you grow a year for a year. And that doesn't mean that when I'm in third grade, I grow to fourth grade, and so I'm successful. It means, what was I achieving? We can drill down and say, this third grader is on a fifth-grade math proficiency. So when that third grader leaves third grade with a fifth-grade math proficiency, they should start fourth grade with a sixth grade, beginning to move forward. So math assessment demonstrates that, it is on a ROSH unit, and so we actually can determine where kids are. And no matter where they are, they have to have the growth that's towards their achievement already. And the math will take and adjust, it doesn't allow you, when the kid steps back on, it's only a 20-minute, you know, quick assessment. When they step back on it, they start where they left off so that you can't go back and say, oh, yeah. So it's real dynamic to the child. Some kids take a longer time, some a little. The longer you take on math with a kid, you know that they actually have a higher propensity to learn and at a higher level. So it is key that in data, in closing the gap, that you have to, because you can close the gap the other way, make everybody go down. So you have to get guaranteed a year for a year, not grade level year, but achievement year, what they're already doing. And then you also have to make up more than a year for kids who are behind. You have to find ways to do that. And technology is the, that is the true efficiency for which it is the least expensive, and you can train multiple times. So the younger the child is, the earlier you have to do it to actually, you can't afford when we take an old child to get on grade level. Once or two years behind, that's significant. Without a whole lot of money, it's hard to do. To get a child getting on grade level by third grade is just repetition. It's things that you have to learn that just needs to get them up there. So it's exciting, it's based off of research, and what you said is absolutely correct in that you have to look at where they are so they don't lose it. And all of our middle schools are doing that, because we have some kids going into middle school sixth or seventh grade that are actually on a ninth-grade level. Thank you, Dr. Whittleton. Mr. Train.
Doctor, on the ASC social behavior offenses, do we break that out by type of offense? Because many of these kids have provided these offenses in school, will carry that forward when they become adults. So do we know predominantly the type of offense that should be addressed?
Through the chair, to Mr. Train, yes. And they are defined ideally by about 10 or 12 different offenses. And yes, I can provide you the list today when we get back, but I can also, I wonder if it's showing on there, it's probably not in the picture. But on October 10th, this will be public, so you'll actually see all that, but I will provide it to the Assembly prior to that time. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Train. Mr. Starr.
It's a conversation that's going to sound caustic to some, but I find the nature of the conversations where we meet people in the grocery stores or the coffee shop, that's not a disclaimer, they tend to become prejudiced when we move towards that conversation that, well, there's more First Alaskans in that school, that's why that school's in trouble, or Black students, or thereabouts. And so I need guidance, whether it be emails or just general conversation, that that's not the reason why, as well as the fear factor. You know, where I represent Chigak, Eagle River, we've got high-score numbers and all that. That the other factor that comes into play as well, don't take my resources to solve a problem at X. And that conversation is very challenging for me to come about because I'm not always certain what the driving forces are for both the achievement and the underachiever. And when you blatantly put it in there in ethnicity and race conversations with the First Alaskan native population mixed in there, it seems like we're trending more towards a conversation that could become a prejudiced statement, and I don't know any better word for that, or at fault for pulling my school numbers down, not mine, but the area in general. So I'm cautious about that. So the data dashboard, will it have ethnicity, race, and that by school as well? Does it summarize that?
Yes, it does. So you will be able to see the percentages, but certainly, the message from us, this is not about intellect. This was about intellect. I mean, it truly is about opportunities and understanding where our kids are and what kind, what we need to benefit. But certainly, you know, that is exactly where we don't want to go. We're going to succeed when we all move forward, when everybody, every, if I have a kid for a year, they need to learn a year or more. And, you know, it isn't about that school, you know, those people bring this or this. It is all of us. This is, we are a very diverse place, and when all is, all of us achieve. And so, you know, ANSEP is an exact example of that, the Alaska Native Science and Enduring Program. If it was about intellect, then...
My child went there and did that program, but it tends to become those conversations. And I'm just looking for, how do you get past that fear, first, they're going to mess with Chigak, you're going to bring down that, you know? And it's, because oftentimes, well, if we had a better building, golden, your middle school is not groaning, but the numbers change. So I need to have that conversation so we can become more collective, because we're quite territorial out in our group, independent would be another word, but we're protective of that as well. As it drifts into the budgetary conversation related to that, we used to see budgetary support developed by school, attached to the back of the proposed budget books. And when I dug deep into that, that wasn't always the way it came out. So there was this sort of perception, and prove me wrong or not, but the attachments to the budget books were to say, we would fund Eagle River High School at, you know, 1.7 million for this and all that. And then when the final budgets came, the overall funding scheme came into play, whether some are better or not, then we did a rebalancing of that after the public hearings were occurring. Does that happen? Do you know that that still happens?
Through the chair, we, the practice of defining it by school has not happened since I've been on the board.
Right, we used to do it that way, and there was a certain expectation that that Assembly member or that budgetary function, when we amended or what, we were comfortable with it. But how then do we fund by school to sort of track that progress for achievement as opposed to reducing the score numbers by budgetary driving? Pull teachers out, how do we prevent that from a budgetary perspective?
There's a few questions that I'm not exactly sure about the achievement part of it, but certainly...
Number of teachers and class size is usually how it happens.
So ESSA, the new act, just, it was kind of on hold in a conference committee for quite some time at the federal level. And the one thing that they disagreed on was they, and they finally decided it, I believe, last week, is how schools have to report equity of funding. And they are, it used to be by FTE, or full-time equivalent. So I have this many teachers at this school, this many teachers at this school. But we all know that teachers of different levels, masters are higher than teachers who have a bachelor's. And generally, the longer you're in the system, the more you can navigate to a school of your choice. Newer folks generally take the job that's there. And generally, jobs in our lower socioeconomic areas are, have more openings, that's what happens. So, but the new law says that you have to report by school, by mean of school, not, so schools are not equal or equitable just because they have the same FTE. It has to be by the dollar amount.
Yeah, so let me ask you this, are we equipped to do that?
We, oh, we're, I'm bringing, someone is here that's going to do that. Our sign guard system will be able to do that, the board will be, people will be able to see this is how much money per student goes into here. Now, there's quite a few programs that are more expensive. If you have a lot of career technical programs in a school, it's going to be way more expensive. You can only have eight to 10 kids in some of those, because they're outside party, third-party regulated, like automotive, you're not allowed to have, you know, just for safety reasons. Or special services, if you have a DEEPED class, you know, they're probably going to have more adults than kids. So there are some other indicators that they're trying to...
Maybe those are secrets to success. I don't, I mean, I don't know. The FTE conversation is helpful to have, I didn't mean interrupt, but the last thing that happens is that lending after the budgets are approved, and I know that that's occurred in the past, and so we have to be careful that it doesn't happen again.
The federal regulations are going to force the opposite of what you're talking about.
Will that happen this budget cycle, do you think?
You know what, it's happening for us, because I, a board member said, I want to know. And I said, well, I was surprised that they didn't know, but I said, I will get this for you. So we can do that now, more work, or Andy, you know? But our system, we're increasing our sign guard system, be able to do that automatically. But the state will require, once all those regulations are put in place, at the feds, they'll trickle down to us, and we'll have to start through that.
Will it be on there?
Yeah, and then it'll be on the DEEPED side as well.
When do you think that will happen?
I bet they'll make it for FY18 next year.
Not launched at your October 10 summary by school?
No, we will have it, the board will have that, though. The board in October will have by-school finances.
I would like that, too.
Thank you. I see your hands, but Mr. Peterson is next. Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I think the data dashboard, the information you have here is going to help you a lot, it'll help you find out what you don't know. You can do the drilling down and talking about it. I can see that being a very, very useful tool. But my question, I've always have a hard time... But my question is, I've always have a hard time imagining, how can kids only have slightly over 50% attendance? That makes absolutely no sense to me. I was perfect attendance kind of guy. And so, people that are only showing up half the time, do we have information on why they don't show up more often? If you're not in school, it's hard to learn. And you can see the statistics, the groups that have 90% attendance are the kids that are getting fewer apps.
But that wasn't 50% attendance. That was 50% who got to 90, right? So how many students were at 90% attendance? Still a good point, but it's just, it wasn't, they were gone half the time.
Right. So anyway, do we have more information or can we get more information about why kids just don't show up?
I'll explain it to you at some point.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Evans?
Yeah. Thanks, Madam Chair. I've been going to these meetings for two and a half years. I don't think I've said two things. For the most part, it's just, I'm not interested. Point is, I'm serious because, I mean, I really believe that, you know, education, not only in Anchorage, but everywhere, is in need of a revolution. I've said that before. Much more fundamental change than we're talking about. And most of the things we talk about in these meetings, you know, whether high school kids come to school earlier or later. It's like discussing, you know, the color paint you're going to put on the walls. So I just sit there and, you know, kind of take it all in and let them glad that other people are, you know, working on it. But this presentation, I was interested. This is the first thing I've heard in the last, since I've been going to these meetings, that not only gave me confidence that we were kind of going in a better direction, but that it was the right direction to go in. I mean, I think, I still think it's too small and still want my revolution. But I'm really impressed that you're digging into this level and seem to be motivated to do something about it once you get the data. So it's just a way to say that I congratulate the school board on what seems to me to be a very good hire for this.
Well, thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Buskey?
I just wanted to add a couple of things that what we've been talking about. One of the things that we face in a school district is our transit rate. We have some schools that are 40 to 50% their kids are transit, which means they might be there two weeks, they might be there two months, and then they're gone. So, and they might move to another school, they might move to another district, they might go back out to the village. So that's really hard to, when we talk about proficiencies and such, you know, we have to include those numbers at the, in October. And so that's part of those numbers. But when you've got a transit rate of that magnitude, it does kind of screw, screw, I can't say that. Anyway. Anyway, those numbers. The other, both things. The other thing is prison, the pipeline. We've heard it all, the prison pipeline, that any child that is suspended has an increased risk of becoming involved in the juvenile system or incarcerated. So one of the things I think that we've done a poor job in the past, and I'm excited that we are looking at this, is we have suspended children for wrongful disobedience. We have suspended kids because they kicked the door. We have suspended kids because maybe they said a profanity. So the answer has been, kick them out of school because we don't want them in the classroom. That's not the answer. The answer is, how do we address that child's need? How do we, maybe there's a conflict between the teacher and child. We've never even sat down and talked about it. So we are looking at different ways to help those children be successful, keep them in the classroom, because that does affect our graduation rate, it does affect our attendance rate. And so those are things that I'm very happy that the school district is looking at, how we're going to change that whole suspension and what it looks like.
Thank you, Ms. Buskey. Mr. Buskey?
Yes, I just want to clarify for Mr. Starr. The data dashboard that's coming out hasn't been set up to put those financial pieces in there. It's more geared toward the academic achievement attendance. However, I am hoping that as something to our budget this year, that that information will be provided. So, but at this point, it's not built into the data dashboard.
Thank you, Mr. Buskey. Mr. Wilson?
Oh, thank you. I want to echo the things that Mr. Croft said and Mr. Evans. I'll just say ditto, verbal. Because my greatest frustration has been consistently, where's the data? What is the data telling us? How do we utilize that data to get the best education and return on our investment? And this is the very first time I actually feel like we have leadership that has a, I hate to say it like that, but I know when I talked, and it's not, I'm talking about the school board, I'm talking about actually somebody who's not afraid of the data. That's what I'm talking about. You know, somebody's not going to take the data and be a teacher to over stick because we're not getting the results we want. And I love the fact that somebody, we have leadership now that comes in and says, "Okay, well, what does it tell us?" It's an opportunity for all of us to do better for our kids. I know I talked extensively with Mathis School Board members and legislators prior to the hire. And I'm happy to say I haven't been went down this far. So I'm very enthusiastic. I think this is the first time, this gives us hope. And as everybody has said, this is an opportunity to have a community discussion. So however it is, we need to shift resources, we need to change things, we need to be more helpful. I'm excited to do that. And I just, I learned a lot today. And I can tell the school board is really holding Dr. Framo's speech to the fire and has given real direction that you guys want to change. And I think we're right there with you. And we just really appreciate your leadership and your willingness to take the data to the top and to learn from it and to blaze a path so our kids are the best in nation.
Thank you, Mr. Buskey. I don't see any other hands, but I have to say this was an excellent, excellent presentation. Is your name up?
I would just say that the training is, in fairness to, and appreciate your comments, is not so much the board holding Dr. Framo's speech to the fire. At the very first board meeting, we had this presentation from Dr. Framo. The leadership role here is there. I've always been on the board, the most important thing that you do is hiring the superintendent. That's the most important thing the board does. So we take, I agree with Mr. Evans, I take a lot of pride in the selection we did. We do have that being led with the board. We've always wanted this, we have been getting it. But we've got a new day. And I am just tickled, painful, and so he's one. There's a role here that Dr. Framo has a great job of recognizing the board, and I appreciate that. But it's a two-way street. It's just fantastic just going up.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Mr. Croft?
No, I was just showing Pat how to raise his hand.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Croft.
Yeah, I just want to do a shout-out to our chief information officer and his staff because this is a result of very, very hard, encouraging work on their behalf. And so I want to make sure the kudos are shared. Yes, the leadership is important. And I can tell you, as a former classroom teacher, where I got student test scores, like in the fall, after I didn't have the students anymore, the data didn't really help me. And so this, you know, on-time, like I have, you can get reports, this is great. You can get reports sent to you, you can subscribe to certain reports. So every Monday morning, after the attendance data is updated, I get a report sent to me on attendance for the whole Anchorage School District. So you can, you know, have your alerts and all types of great things, use of technology. So the ability to do this, I think teachers and staff have always wanted to be able to utilize this data. We just didn't have the resources to be able to make that easily accessible. And so people are very excited. I, you know, as I said, I'm a former classroom teacher. I had many people in the trenches and they're talking about, you know, "Oh, this is, this is what I learned and hmm, that doesn't work. So what do I need to do differently in order to change the outcome?" That's the type of discussion as a board member. I'm very, very.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wellington?
You know, the data is really good. The most important data, probably most of us to meet today is Zangle. And it's one kid down to one in the school district. And I want to see how he's doing right now because I got to stay on him every day. And it's very valuable when it's kept up to date. But when the teachers don't use it, we're relying on it. It's a problem. So, and I think it depends on the teacher. But if you encourage the teachers, if you're going to provide Zangle, keep it up to date. Because I'll look at this maybe twice a year, but I look at his every single day.
We actually are reviewing grading practices to where it will become a requirement and something that is done because it's the value on the outside of every, and probably more kids use Zangle now than adults because they check their own stuff. It's a good point. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Buskey.
I just want to piggyback on what Mr. Wellington said because I have juniors still. And when you were talking about zeros and how they can make you great, I mean, that's my golden rule is if I see a good day, you know, all bets are off. So, Zangle is a huge resource for parents because my kids check, I check, I think, once or twice a week. Once a week or once every two weeks.